Good morning. I would like to call the Cuyahoga County Public Transit Advisory Subcommittee to order, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Calling the roll, Mr. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Ms. Galucci.
She is not here, but I am Kelly Britt from Nowacka in her stead.
Okay.
And also representing Mark and Mark.
Mr. Feliciano.
President.
Ms. Kilbane.
Here.
Mr. Singh.
Here.
Mr. Osbey.
Here.
Mr. Mitterholzer.
Here.
There is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the Cuyahoga County Public Transit Advisory Subcommittee. I want to thank all of the members for your willingness to serve. It will take significant time and effort to come up with significant results, so I appreciate your time, effort, and dedication. We now come to the portion of the meeting for public comment. Following the process used at all public meetings at county council, we offer any citizen the opportunity to speak for three minutes to address the committee, and the time may be extended at the discretion of the chair. People who are speaking on topics related to the day's agenda are heard at the beginning of the meeting, and people speaking on topics unrelated to the day's agenda are heard at the end of the meeting. People wishing to speak should register with the clerk by filling out the brief form at the clerk's desk on the side of the room. During public comment, we only hear from presenters; we do not respond to or answer questions. In addition to the opportunities to provide public comment, we expect to hear from expert witnesses as part of the agenda for future meetings. This will enable us to gather information in greater detail than can be heard in public comment, and also to interact with the presenters. Ms. Janine, has anyone signed in for public comment related to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The first one is Reverend Pamela Pinkney Butts.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Cold Friday. I greet each of you this morning in the name of Jesus Christ, which has been my keeper and has afforded me to be a good witness and professional witness for the purpose of this transportation system. The agenda was not written out as to what you all are going to fully discuss at your table today, but I did see one thing that was very clear in your list, and you were going to be addressing the state funding. Prior to my saying this, I want to say to you, Mr. Joe Calabrese is one of the most remarkable people I've ever seen in my life. He is in meetings at 6:30 and 7:00 in the morning for our transportation system and makes sacrifices that I've never seen anybody make for anything. And I've been using public transportation since I was in my teenage, a teenager, when I went to Charles Mooney Junior High School. I've used it both personally, professionally; I've used it for safety reasons, et cetera. I'm very concerned about the fact that when administration changed, the state took our funding from us. Mr. Calabrese, Mr. Dixon, and the board members got together and pushed a button and pushed everything they could to get an enormous amount of money that Governor Ted Strickland had gotten for us. When Governor Kasich got in office, he took our money from us, and it has gone downhill ever since. When you talk about your agenda today, I do plan to come back for non-agenda items because you were not expecting me, as usual, but I do have some concerns I would like to bring to the table. But if I could pick out and pinpoint one thing on that list, it would be the fact that the money was taken from us and should have never been taken from us, and our system has gone downhill from this. And it's not at the fault of Mr. Joseph Calabrese, or Mr. George Dixon, or those board members because they are tirelessly working and sacrificing for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Butts, we expect that you may come at any time, so we're not surprised. Ms. Janine.
Next is Mr. Calabrese.
Thank you. I just briefly want to thank council for putting this committee together. I want to thank the participants for participating and donating their time for this. I think we're all here because we realize that we can't have a first-class community without a first-class public transportation system. Jose will be representing RTA. I and the rest of the RTA staff will be here as resources as needed. So again, thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you very much. We're honored to have you here today. Ms. Janine.
No one else has signed in, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. We now come to the point where we would like to have introductions of the committee members, and I would start by saying that this is a very, very special committee, in that this is the first committee that the county council has ever had that consists both of members of county council and members of the general public. And we're very hopeful that this will produce a very wide-ranging discussion and a lot of innovative results. And we envision that we might have this kind of committee from the very start of the new government, but this is the first time that it has been implemented. I'm Dale Miller. I represent the Second County Council District, which includes the West Park area of Cleveland and the cities of Brook Park and Lakewood. And I have a very strong interest in public transportation. I believe it is vital to the success of our community, and we have special challenges here in Cuyahoga County because we have enough population density to create a good public transit system, but not so much density to really kind of provide the ridership levels that make it work easily and very cost-effectively. So we have challenges, and I'm hoping that we can come up with some innovative and effective new ways of being effective in advocating for public transit and improving public transit in Cuyahoga County. At this point, I'd like to go around the room and have everybody say a little bit about themselves and their background and their interest in the committee. We'll go to my right to my dear colleague, Ms. Conwell.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Yvonne Conwell. Low-income district, and so the people that live in my district primarily are very challenged by this. I have seniors; I have children that are getting to school, low income, as I stated, and they need the transportation system. As Joe Calabrese eloquently stated, we need, this is a vibrant city that needs a vibrant bus transportation system. So I am very dedicated in working on this committee. I didn't have the full time that a chair needs, so my colleague Dale Miller graciously stood up and said he would organize this and get it started, but I am very glad that I am the vice chair, and I hope I can lend him as much resource and research that I need to do as a committee member on this committee. Thank you. So I will pass it. Pass it to my right. Thank you.
Thanks to councilman Miller for starting this committee. My name's Akshay Singh. I am a member of Clevelanders for Public Transit. I've, in the past, been on the Cleveland Heights Transportation Advisory Committee. I'm a resident of Cleveland Heights and formerly worked for the Group Transportation for America in DC after graduating from Case Western. So I've worked in public transportation and advocacy for the last five years. I've been a rider of RTA since our family moved here in 1997, have mostly grew up in the suburbs and went to school in the city, and have, you know, really been hoping that we lift riders' voices from the local level to the state level, make sure that, you know, people who are differently abled, people who are not having access to a car, really have a full voice because right now in our transportation system, that's just certainly not the case.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, Councilman Miller, for creating this organization. I'm John Mitterholzer. I'm a senior program officer for the environment at the George Gunn Foundation, where we fund transit and transportation work in my program area. Personally, I'm a resident of Lakewood and a daily user of RTA. I commute using both the 55 and the Red Line Rapid on a daily basis, as does my wife. So we are active users and participants in the transit system in our off-work hours, and then I work on these issues during the day as well.
My name is Perry Osby. I am an assistant business agent for Local 268/RTA. I've been an employee at RTA for 28 years. My history with RTA, I started at 18 years of age as a laborer because I wasn't old enough to drive any of RTA's equipment or vehicles, per se. Once I turned 21, I became a bus operator, where I operated coaches for 15 years, and then I went into supervision, and now I'm the assistant business agent for the union, which represents all of operations. And I have a big concern with the transportation in the various areas in the city. Myself, I grew up on the east side, and there's places that I come encounter with on a daily basis where I see people walking, and I'm wondering why there's no buses in that area that once was there. So it's very important to me to try and get services for people that are inconvenienced in that sense. Thank you.
Good morning. I think this is, thank you for putting this council together. It's very important for the region. My name is Mark Sinoni. I'm representing my executive director, Grace Galucci, from Nowacka, and Nowacka is the Metropolitan Planning Organization in Cleveland. But transit is critical to Cleveland, both in bringing job access and access for, we have job hubs in places where it's difficult to reach jobs from where people live, but also for using transit as a tool for economic development. I think when TransCentral was built, when TransCentral is, like, there's nothing around it. I don't look at that area of Midtown Manhattan today, but so happy that we're on this committee. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jose Fleschau, junior external affairs manager for RTA. Thank you, Councilman Miller, for assembling this committee. Besides the fact that I work at RTA, I am a rider, and I think that, you know, this is a critical issue, and not only for the success of our city, but for our region and our state. And Ohio as a whole needs a robust transit system if we're going to survive and also prosper in this century. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Claire Kilbane. I'm the assistant director of the Cuyahoga County Planning Commission. For many years, I was an alternate to various county public officials at Nowacka, so I'm very familiar with transportation and funding. I also, in my career here at the county planning, worked on welfare-to-work issues and also was a main planner for the senior transportation connection and getting that study up and running, and then getting the actual ridership program, and it's very successful. I see their buses all over, and I used to be a daily user of RTA when I was in school, which was a long time ago, but thank you, Councilman Miller.
Thank you very much. We appreciate everyone's varied backgrounds and all the different experience and perspectives that you bring to the table. I would now like to take this opportunity. We are fortunate to have available the resources of our county council staff to assist us with the work of this committee, and I would like to introduce Khalil Saran, who is the staff person for this committee, who will be most responsible for helping with the research and putting information together and such things. And we also have Mike King, who is the legal staff person for the county council, and also Janine Carter is the clerk for the committee. I would also mention two other staff people who aren't here this morning but may also come into play at some point. We have Joe Nani as our chief of staff, and also Trevor McAllaire is the finance person for the county council, and we're going to be certainly dealing with financial matters, so he may assist us as well. I would also like to acknowledge the presence of our county law director, Bob Triasi. Thank you for being with us this morning. So we have an excellent staff and a lot of resources to help do our work. All meetings of this Public Transit Advisory Subcommittee will be open to the public according to the Ohio Sunshine Law and our own public meetings ordinance. There is a provision that allows for a limited number of specific sensitive issues to be discussed in executive session. However, I believe it is unlikely that any executive sessions will be needed for this committee. In addition, all meetings will be recorded and livestreamed on the internet, so please just be aware that we are on the record. Going on to item seven, the purpose of this committee and end product, the Public Transportation Advisory Subcommittee, is a subcommittee of Cuyahoga County's committee of the hall and is authorized to operate through December 31, 2017, for the purpose of making recommendations on how Cuyahoga County can play a more effective role in improving public transit in Cuyahoga County. And as we mentioned before, this is our first committee that includes both members of council and the general public, and hope that this will facilitate a wide-ranging discussion with innovative results. The committee was created by council president Dan Brady in the aftermath of the recent RTA budgets, rates, and services issues earlier this year, and creation of a committee on public transit was actively supported by community representatives who presented to county council. In creating this committee, council president Brady suggested several possible end products, such as the following. Number one, policy recommendations for the biennial transportation and operating bills scheduled to be introduced into the Ohio General Assembly in early 2017. Second, non-funding policy and program recommendations for Cuyahoga County, which would advance public transportation efficacy, efficiency, affordability, and access. Third, a list of potential regional public transit capital projects ranked in order of priority. And fourth, strategies for maximizing use of public transportation by Cuyahoga County residents. I consider these to be examples in an initial list. We have the opportunity, within reason, to define and scope out what we hope to accomplish on this committee. At this time, kind of taking items seven and eight on our agenda together, I would like to open the floor to discussion as to what you feel the goals, objectives, and end products of this committee should be, and what we hope to get out of it, and where we think we can end up. So I open that to anybody's comments.
I would like to see a solid plan for transit development.
Would you use a microphone, please? Thank you.
One end product of this committee, I would like to see is a solid plan forward for where transit lines would be, if it's rail or bus or whatever mode it is, where they'll be, where the stations will be, and then, you know, how will this be funded as well? So a funding plan, an operational plan, and an alignment plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Councilman, there are a number of conversations happening at the state level about permanent funds for transit in the state, and I would love us to be able to weigh in on that conversation and perhaps even submit some suggestions along those lines.
John, could you share with us a little bit of, as much as can be openly discussed about the discussions that are taking place?
Sure. So the George Gunn Foundation is a funder of the Fund for Economic Future, and in that regard, I work with the staff there on transit issues. We have hired a consultant to help us think through what is the best permanent source of funding. For those who are not aware, the majority of transit funding in the state comes from the general revenue funds, and is, every two years, it is at risk of being reduced or, you know, potentially increased, but what we've seen over the last 20 years has been a reduction. So the conversation that we're trying to, that we're having right now, we've asked our consultant to talk to a number of business leaders, chambers, others, around what might be the permanent solution for transit funding in the state. Most states have a permanent transit fund. We do not. We have to go every other year and fight for what we have. So that's the hope, and then if we can find a permanent source, we can begin to think about what are the ways to actually have that enacted at the state level. So the conversations are ongoing, and I think it would be helpful and useful for us to think about at the state level. And I think many of you know we rank as one of the lowest states in the amount of state funding we spend, 66 cents per capita, and the national average is over $35 per capita.
One thing that I would add is that attempts are being made, and there seems to be some progress around engaging chambers of commerce on this issue, as businesses are rightly concerned about the difficulty that many of their employees have in getting to work, and the engagement of the chambers of commerce creates the possibility that a bipartisan consensus could be forged, and that's absolutely critical if we're going to get anything significant done. So I think the question of how we can build a bipartisan consensus around public transit is one of the critical issues that bears discussion. And along that line, I would just add that in this committee, I think it's going to be very important that we, that we just don't think about what ought to be done. We think about how we can create the necessary support for it so that it actually can get Coming up with a good set of recommendations for improving public transit, that's actually the easy part. The part that needs work is that how can we change the discussion, the level of support, the political conditions that have created this situation where we have clearly insufficient support for public transit? Yes?
I would just like to say for the critical dates and deadlines, if we could get those, and since you stated that this committee is till December 2017, if we could have those dates in place and we can kind of work towards them, you know, to meet those deadlines or whatever those dates are.
Okay, well, I can share a little bit for openers, and this is going to need more fleshing out, but next month, in January, any attempts to work through the governor's office in terms of what they present to the legislature in the budget and transportation bills would have to be done at that time because the executive budgets are submitted to the legislature in early February, and I think there's often a better chance at impacting the governor's proposal than there is of moving the legislature. And I think that tends to get overlooked sometimes, so that's one critical date, and then early February is the introduction of budget bills, and June 30 is the completion of the state budget process. And my expectation is that in July and August, we would have a time of assessing what came out of the state budget process and what it means, and September to December would be a time of knowing what we know about the outcome of the state budget process, what are the recommendations for further steps and actions, and as Mr. Mitterholzer pointed out about the discussions about a dedicated funding source, that's almost certainly a longer timeframe discussion than the upcoming budget cycle, you know? So that's, but depending on what comes out of the budget cycle may influence how that discussion is positioned and what it looks like, so that's in the later part of the year. I don't know to what extent this committee might get into any federal stuff, but if so, October 1 is when the new federal fiscal year starts, so those are some of the critical dates that immediately come to mind.
I had a question. Since January, it seems like January, early February are critical in terms of the state budget. Perhaps if we could get the county state representatives, Cuyahoga County state representatives together to talk about these issues, the funding and the issues we have in general, and getting people to work, maybe some type of briefing? That's one suggestion.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. Now, we are going to send to send one member of Cuyahoga County Council to the legislature in David Greenspan, so that, that, that gives us a special point of contact that we might be able to make some positive use of. Other comments, suggestions? Well, I think that, that these are questions that we should all be thinking about and continuing to work on between now and the, now and the next meeting, so that we can hopefully start to move fairly quickly on some things in January. We did talk about the, the critical dates and deadlines, and we'll move on to item number 10, which we've touched on some already, which is the discussion of the state budget process. And, and in terms of the state budget process, I would just point out that there's, there's really two very, very significant questions. The first question is the general question that comes up every two years around what the level of support for, for public transit is going to be. But this time, there is a second question, which is that, that it's come to light earlier this year, that, that starting in the next budget biennium on July 1st of 2017, that the state will no longer be able to collect the Medicaid sales tax that we've been collecting for a number of years. And, and this is, this is going to create a loss of revenue that affects not only counties and municipalities who collect sales tax, but also very significantly, public transit systems who, who rely on sales tax as one of their primary sources of revenue. I believe the estimate of, of what the impact for RTA is somewhere in the range of 15 to 20 million dollars annually. Is that, is that 18, 18 million? Okay. And so that's, that's a very significant problem. And we know that there are discussions going on in, in Columbus of, of what they might do to mitigate this impact. But what I've heard of these discussions so far is, is that the mitigation is more likely to benefit counties and municipalities as opposed to public transit systems. And so I think a very important question for us is, is what can we do to, to get the governor and the legislature to consider the impact on public transit systems, as well as counties and municipalities in dealing with the, the impact of the Medicaid sales tax. And, and my instincts tell me that, that we might have a better chance of moving the needle on that than on the, on, on the broader, general funding question. And, and the 18 million's a big number, you know, so it's, it's worthy of our, our time, effort, and attention. So I just bring that to everybody's attention as, as potentially a major focus area for us.
Right. Well, I mean, it impacts Cuyahoga County as well, because you guys are looking at potentially, what, 21 million?
Yes.
It's trying to find a solution that benefits both.
That's correct.
And, I mean, we're hopeful that the dialogue that we're hearing is that they're trying to find a solution that would make everybody whole. I mean, everybody's looked at what's happened in California, and Pennsylvania, and Michigan, and there, they chose to assess the sales tax to all of the healthcare providers. And if that would be the case, then not only would that make us whole, but that would actually give us more local sales and use tax to work with. I think it's a question of convincing the healthcare providers, you know, that that's in their best interest as well. And I've heard that there's a possible rebate that could be given to them so that they would go along with that.
Okay, that's a good point. Other comments?
Oh, I guess I had a question. We could have a presentation on that, on the different, the impact, but also what these other states are doing to mitigate the issue. I think there's nine states that, eight states that had it, and I think all of them, except for Ohio, has taken. So it would be interesting, I think, for me to have that background.
Well, this issue is critical and urgent, and I, I think we should try to plan for that presentation to be an important part of our next meeting on January. Other, other Okay. Like to move on to item number 11, which is, which is discussion of research information. And in your packet, you, you have a, a sheet that lists nine different kinds of information. One of the important things that a committee like this needs to do, and, and early in its time of operation, is just to assemble basic background factual information, so that we have the, the basic, underlying information that we need to help consider, consider what alternatives are worth pursuing. So hopefully, some of you at least have had a chance to, to look at this prior to the meeting, and if not, you can quickly look at it now. And I would just like to open the floor for comments on, are these the right questions? Are there other, are there other questions that, that we should put forward? And, and I would note again that the items listed on here are, are only the items of, of basic background factual information. There are, of course, going to be some, some very serious questions relating to, to strategies and alternatives and scenarios and such things. But, but this particular thing focuses on, on developing the, the basic background information that we need.
Dale?
Yes.
Well, it's not on the list, I'm sorry. Another question that I think is worth exploring is, we know where the state stands on the gas tax issue, and you can't use that to fund transit, but legally, what if we were going to do a gas tax for the county? Is that something that we can explore?
One other question to consider is that the, the state gets federal money that could go to transit but has chosen to not spend it on transit. And I've never seen a very good figure of what that is. I think it would be helpful to know, based on state policy and not federal policy, what could we be spending on transit that we are not?
Okay, that's a good one.
I have attended some of the meetings of the Economic Development Commission, the counties, and Joe Roman, and several other with the Chambers of Commerce, Harriet Applegate, there's a number of people there. And they have brought up transportation in their discussions in term, and how it relates to economic development. And I think it would be, I think they're part of the, the group that's not here, are the, the businesses. I know when I worked on the welfare to work a long time ago, under President, when President Clinton had that, and each county had to come up with a plan, it started to work, but then eventually failed because the companies wouldn't put any money. They wanted the workers, but they wouldn't put any money in toward keeping the, the transit and those small, very small bus lines going. And I think, I think that's a very important, maybe revenue source, or public advocacy source that we need to explore here.
Okay, thank you. I would, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. I would, I would point out that, that we, we are seeking to, to have an additional member of this committee, a, a person who would be a representative of a business that has, has locations that are, are a little more difficult to, to reach through public transit as currently designed, and, and to bring that business perspective. But we've been, we've been asking around and not yet been able to, to find that person. But, but we expect we'll do so by the next meeting. And we, because of these, these critical time deadlines, we, we thought it important to get, get underway now. But your point is very well taken.
Chairman Miller, also, we had initial conversations, we were discussing the medical impact. And so I do not see a representative here from the hospital systems. Is that also something that we're looking forward to, getting a member added?
Well, actually, we're, we're looking at, at people who would kind of represent both, because the, the clinic and UH both fall in that category, you know, you know. So, so, so a representative from one of those institutions could represent the medical community and, and a business that has locations where there's access questions. So, so that's actually what we're looking at. Okay, well, I would, I would just point out that, that today is not the deadline for, for suggesting other kinds of information that we might, might need to look into and gather. So, so if, if, if in the, if in the days or the next couple of weeks ahead, you think of, think of other things that we should consider, you know, just, just call or email me, and, and we can, we can add additional items. And we're gonna, we're gonna work on, on trying to put together at least a preliminary packet of information that includes some answers to most or all of these questions by the time we have our next meeting. So, so that we'll have some background information to work with. So I appreciate everybody's input on that. And in terms of planning for, for our next meeting, our next meeting is going to be on, on Thursday, January the 5th, at 10 o'clock, at, at this location. And I expect that, again, because of the budget timeline, we'll want to have a second meeting later in the month. And so we'll, we'll send out some possible dates and, and get, get everybody's input on that. And now, by the time of the second meeting in January, the, the county council, which will start its new session on January 3rd, we will, we will know what the schedule of, of regular committee meetings is. And, and hopefully, after that second meeting in January, we'll be able to work together and figure out a regular date and time that we need. And, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll probably set up two, two meeting slots per month, but we may not use all of them, so that, you know, my anticipation is that, that we'll meet at least once a month, and, and, and we'll meet a second time when we have, have things that we're working on that need, need the time and attention to meet our, our goals in terms of timeframe. So, does that, does that make sense to everybody? Just as, as an initial possibility, I'm thinking the second meeting might be, be exactly two weeks later, on, on, on Thursday, the 19th, at, at 10 o'clock. I'd just like to get an initial impression. Does, does anyone know of having, having conflicts on, on that?
I will be out.
What?
I'll be traveling.
You'll be traveling that day? Okay. Anybody else have conflicts on that day? Okay, well, we're gonna, we'll send out some options and see if we can, see if we can find, find an option that's perfect. And, and if not, that we might have to use that day. But hopefully, hopefully, we can find one that works for everybody. So I'll, I'll probably send that out pretty soon before, before schedules start to fill up. And we'll, we'll work on getting a, a good date for, for the second meeting in January that works for everybody. Okay.
Councilman Miller, I would just like to add that that is, will be the first meeting for the Ohio Homeless Advisory Board. And I do have an alternate for that meeting, but by it being the very first.
And what time is that?
It's from 9:00 to 11:00.
Okay, well, then, then I have, have two conflicts, and that means we're not going to do the 19th. So, so we'll, we can do better than that. So we'll start, I'll come up with a number of possibilities, and we'll send around a poll like I did the last time, and we'll find, we'll find a good time. Okay, no problem. There's, there's, there's plenty of options. Okay, so we, we come to the, to the item of miscellaneous business, where if there's anything that anybody has that, that we have not discussed, that we think should be discussed before we close our first meeting, I would just provide time, time for that.
Notice that, Chairman Miller, that most of the questions are related around the budget, which we know is very important. But also, will we get into the weeds of various routes and things? For example, Public Square, been some issues with Public Square and transit. Wondering if we'll touch some of those.
I, I think, I think that's up to us as a committee, but I think one of our, one of our charges is, is to ask the question of, are there ways that, that public transit can be more effective without spending a lot of additional money, you know? And that's a very You know, and, and that's a very important question, and that, and, and questions of routes and scheduling can be, can be relevant to that. So, so the answer is yes. And I've also heard it said that the, that, that RTA having to route the buses around Public Square is, is going to cost RTA a significant amount of money, you know? So, so anything that, that costs RTA money, it means there's other things they can't do that would probably be good, you know? So, so that's, that's a concern as well. I think we should at least add to the, I know Mayor Frank Jackson announced a decision. We should at least add to our decision, our question list to, to find out to what extent that question is done, resolved, and cast in concrete, or whether that's still open to discussion. You know, I think that, that would be an important thing to, to consider, you know? Generally, generally, I see this committee as, as being broader and more strategic than, than dealing with specific details of routing and scheduling, but, but some things might rise to the level of, of getting our attention. So, so I'm, I'm open to that. So we're gonna, we are gonna add that to the list and get, to get some background information on the Public Square situation.
And Councilman Miller, just one other question we could add, just a, to get a, for the committee to get a context for the upcoming RTA fare hikes in 2018, and any potential kind of planned cuts for, I know that there's been potential cuts floated for the 2017 budget, just to get a context of what those proposals are for riders or, you know, in terms of county service, I think might be important.
Okay, that's added to the list. Thank you. One matter of, of housekeeping, am I right, Janine, that, that everybody here can, can get a voucher for parking? Is, is that correct? So I would just...
We don't want to encourage them to take public transit.
So, so I would, well, that's, that's, that's a good point, but we, we offered everybody that participates in our committee, the, the, we want, it's part of our plan to encourage public participation. So, so just see Janine, and you can get, get the voucher for parking. Okay, so, any other miscellaneous business?
Miller, I was just wondering, have we designated anyone to keep us abreast of the discussions that are going on downstate? Keep us abreast of... Taylor, I don't want to kid nobody in the name. It just would be helpful to know what they're kind of talking about.
That's, that's a very good point. We need to, we need to develop a liaison process for that, and we'll work on that between now and the next meeting. I think that, I think that's an area where Councilman Greenspan could be very helpful, you know, but, or soon to be state representative, but there, there, there's probably other ways to do that, because as close as our relationship is there, he is gonna, he is gonna get there at the bottom of the totem pole, you know? We're, we're gonna probably want to try to also find some contacts that are higher up the ladder, but, but we'll, we'll work on that. That's, that's, that's a good point. Okay, any other miscellaneous business? Okay, we'll go to the last item of our discussion, which is to ask Ms. Janine if anybody has signed in for public comment unrelated to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have three people signed in to speak.
Okay.
The first one is Reverend Pinkney Butts.
Good morning, once again.
Good morning.
I'm Reverend Pamela M. Pinkney Butts. And Pinkney is my dad's lineage and heritage, and Butts is my mom's maiden name, lineage and heritage. And I've lived to see where women still give up everything, including our names and our heritages, and make sacrifices that should not have to be being made. And it's just time out for that. So I just held on to my dad and my mom's names because I'm not married yet. And I just thought I'd bring that to the table too, for also for your discussion on how women are impacted by these decisions in transportation. I've been addressing transportation issues, whether it be privately or publicly, for a lifetime. I've seen what works, what doesn't work, I've seen what comes and what, and what goes. Unfortunately, we have come to a day and a time which the Bible refers to as perilous times, where violence is a way of life, and hearts have become wax cold and deceitful and wicked. But there is still hope, and there is still a bomb in Gilead in these times. And the fact that you're willing to sit here at this table to make decisions, to make it so, stands for quite a bit more than you realize. Many people have taken the word "public" out of even comment and in speaking platforms. For instance, Cleveland City Council took the word "public" out of safety committee, and they have safety committee, and they have silenced the voice of the public. This poses challenges. I don't believe in problems because problems are unsolvable, because they're only solved by the person who creates them. But circumstances are changeable. I am a licensed five-fold minister in this day and time. I'm also a business owner. I'm also a mom. I'm also a Christian, and I'm also a concerned party. And upon my introduction, some of it with the Greater Regional Trans Authority Board, I was homeless as a result of domestic violence and other violences in my life. But I also was a preacher then as well. And I would also, when you bring the next person that you are designating these people to these authorities, that you would have a concerned clergy member also at your table. You have a business owner, you have the medical arena. But we, my business, first and foremost, is the souls and the lives of, of people, whether it be through my business, through corporations, but first of all, it's through the church. And I'm asking that you would call upon the church in this time. Thank you, Mr. Miller. And Councilwoman Conwell, as well as the rest of you.
Ms. Janine.
Next is Ms. Lou.
Good morning. Welcome to the committee.
Good morning, everybody. Well, this committee, doesn't matter sub or, or not sub, I don't understand why it has the word "sub" at the beginning, but this is actually a very overdue committee, because RTA has been having problems for a long time. But now, this time, it will hit majority of the general public in the county, and that's the reason why right now we are here. And I'm glad to see this happening, and I'm, but right now, this time, I really feel more confident than before when I went to the public hearing at RTA or other meetings, because we have two good county council people here, and I have seen how they lead a certain work to make good results for the people they serve. And I'm glad we do have people from general public business and different type of organizations to participate in this particular meeting. I do agree with this gentleman here. RTA said we have to raise the rate, not this time, even before. That's because state has been neglecting Cuyahoga County, not only the transportation fund, also other funds, for example, the funds for health and human services, mental health, all those things. So maybe in whole, we should not just only pay attention to why they don't give money to the county with a higher population, also in other areas too, because it seems like the state has a biased opinion about the county, which has actually way more population and way more needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Ms. Janine.
Next is Mr. Rico Dancy.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome to the committee.
We're going to talk about the 81, the high rides, children and people, Saturday, they cut the, a couple of months ago, they cut the 81 for the weekend. A family member had to wait four hours for the 81, never showed up on a Saturday. For people, for people who live in a low-income apartment, see me say, ill-income, I have fight it to the state house, okay? I'm just in Columbus with the rep, one of my representatives. My question is, they got four bus stops right now on the square with the taxpayer, with the taxpayer paying for it right now, four stops, four eight. If the bus cannot go through the, the park, why is there? It would take, Saturday, Saturday, I got a call from a, a person, okay? They get off, they 81, trying to run across, they get the other bus, and the bus is left them. Them kind of things concern me. 19 used to go by there, keep going. The 15, I can't even make the bus. I've been riding the bus since I was seven years old, still riding the bus from today. And I'm just, I'm just a lot of concern, especially the riders, I am a lot of concern is how the buses, why the buses going hard to doing this routes? Why did the mayor of Cleveland decide to tell us no? I am a lot of concerned about that. I'm, I'm concerned about my, my earlier, the people at the Cleveland Hearing and Speech Center, we spoke to them yesterday, we, we had a, I had a three-hour meeting with them yesterday. Tomorrow, I'm going to, I'm going to the National Black Death Advocate, I'm having with them. These organizations are telling me, do something, told me to do something. Why, I don't understand, the racekeeper races are fair, people only get, social security only pay them 7.33. It grew up next year another $2, only $2 next year, $2 for 2017, $2 rates. So if a person paid $600 for a rent, how are they going to afford to pay the bus fare? The bus fare for us used to be 38, now it increased to 48. It's going to begin next year, how much, it's going to be another $10. We can't afford it no more. I mean, what can we do? Can we do something, say, the fair cannot get increased? That is a problem what we have. And I would like to see, why can't we have a community person on this board, on this committee, to make sure it must have been done for the people? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms., Ms. Janine.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Calabrese is also signing in to speak.
Okay.
Again, thank you, just, just a few things. And I know Jose is, is busy preparing information we put together to answer some of the questions that were, that were listed there. At least you'll have an opportunity to look at those before the next meeting. And again, if there's any questions in the interim between now and next meeting, please give, give Jose and myself a call. The good news is the change, there's been a change in dynamics for public transit, you know? It's becoming more popular in urban areas, more popular with millennials, more popular for those employers who are looking to attract and retain their, their jobs, stop job search. We talked a little bit about economic development, I know that Carol Caruso has been engaged to do some work and see what, you know, how can public transit and, and the chambers around the state unite to encourage the state to contribute more? That might be a name in the future to come and talk about the results that she's had. Dale, you mentioned, how do we, how do we improve the utilization of public transit? I think the county, county planning has a significant part in that, encouraging people to build and, and locate their jobs where public transit can best serve them. I think there is an opportunity there to look smart, look at the future, I think, in, in doing that. One group that, you don't want a committee too large, but, but, I mean, senior citizens and people with disabilities are very, very important. Certainly a very important lobbying group that maybe would be beneficial. RTA spends about $30 million a year on this pair of transit service. As Claire mentioned, the county and RTA, several years ago, set up the Senior Transportation Connection to do what RTA could not do cost-effectively, so that's a major and growing group that we need to, to look at as well. And just lastly, there are no service cuts planned for 2017.
Thank you very much. Ms. Janine.
No one else to sign in to speak, Mr. Chair.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I just wanted to have one more comment.
Okay.
Increase the ridership number to offset the rate hikes. So I was just wondering if the RTA could provide us anything that they've looked at in regards to that? I know it's always been a discussion to get the ridership up, you know, walkable communities and things of that nature, and stop using the cars. I know they've probably put a lot of time and effort in looking into that. Have that data sent to us, or whatever they've looked at, to kind of help us, if there's something else we can do possibly to increase that ridership.
Okay, good. Add that to the list. Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Say the second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.